We will call the town's select board, regular meeting Thursday, April 11th, 2013, at 7:00 PM. The agenda approval, approval of minutes, 321-13, 325-13, 328-13, and 4-4-13. Warrants, mail, old business, Ray Shields, R.E., auditing concerns, Class II instructure grant applications, adopt town roadway and bridge standards under old business, under new business, Red Cross, and contract negotiations. And a reminder that Saturday, April 13th, four selectmen, Rich, Mike, Dale, and myself will be attending a seminar in Rutland. With that, I will take a motion and approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on 321, 13 minutes.
Remove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on 325, 13.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
328, 13.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
4-4, 13.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Counts payable in the amount of $50,305.37. We have a sewer bond payment in there of $35,259. That's one of your large ones. You have some attorney fees, um, some ice water expenses, payroll transfer, your larger Counts payable in the amount of $14,010.40. Your largest item in there is rack salt, 64 tons. Payable in the amount of $8,651.93. Got some tires, we've got payroll transfer, champagne oil, those are your larger figures. Payroll in the amount of $5,928.25 for the date 4/7, 13 to 4/12, 13. Payroll, 331, 13 to 4/5, 13.
You didn't put me down if it must not have been here.
In the amount of $65,4714. Those are our warrants.
You got one more right here.
Payroll, 324, 13, 329, 13, in the amount of $7,019.26.
I have a question on that one.
Okay.
Is it now?
Go ahead.
Is it time in practice? I know it's, somebody was on vacation, then they worked six hours and got paid overtime. Is that time in practice?
Who are you talking about?
If it was on vacation.
Yeah, it was on vacation. Came in, worked two hours for three different days, and got paid overtime.
So it was probably called in for-
You're going to have to show me who you're talking about, please.
Probably called in for plowing.
I can't, I'm not Karen. At least we had a treatment plan. Carl.
Let me see it.
On the time card. How did that time-
Your overtime is Saturday Sunday, probably.
It just says 40 hours paid vacation.
Check that time card. The first time card and the-
The treatment plan is the treatment plan, if that's- Are you talking road crew?
Just the one.
Hey, check that time card, first service time card.
Oh, well, that's road crew.
Road crew?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But that's still coming back, actually?
Yeah, because he was on a vacation day and got called in to plow or something.
And gets paid overtime?
Yes, anything over 40 hours is paid.
That worked. I've never worked at a place where you can have a vacation, you get called in for two hours, you get paid overtime.
Well, I don't see any vacation anywhere, so I don't know what you're talking about.
Let me look back at it.
I see no vacation. I see all regular time. I see no vacation. Nobody's taken any. The only person that took vacation was Assistant Chief Operator, 40 hours, and was paid 40 hours vacation pay, unless you're in another warrant.
There must be. Go ahead, continue on. I'll try to find this.
Well, I gotta make a motion on the warrant.
Try and do it. Who are you talking about? I don't see what you're talking about.
Right, and about, it says 40 hours and six hours overtime.
That's another employee.
Yeah.
There's two employees on that car.
Oh. All right, it'd be, uh, Darcy.
Darcy has 40 regular and 6 OT.
Okay. Even though she's on vacation.
There is no vacation.
All right, never mind, I was looking at the wrong thing.
Yeah, you're on the wrong individual.
Okay. My mistake.
What was that now?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, we will take a motion on warrants.
So move.
A second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with the exception on Report 41. I have a relative that's troubled. Okay, mail. Have a zoning administrator log. We have a subdivision attorney referral, B.C.I.C., on building use. Three. B.C.I.C. has a member or has a annual meeting Wednesday, April 24th, at noon at the country club, for anybody that is interested. Have a V.L.C.T. newsletter. And that will conduct our mail. Old business. Have our auditor Ray Shields here. I'm going to let you come up to the table. Open up, I don't know if Betty's working with you on this.
Yes.
All right, both can come up to the table, bud.
I'd like to read it, but I'd like to keep an easy copy of that, Mike. And then I'll read it, you guys can like follow along. The desk is now ready.
You got one? Okay. Sorry.
Yeah, thank you. I'll be very brief on this. Thank you for your time last March, March 14th, you gave us some time at the select meeting here, we appreciate that. At that time, you expressed a desire to place the issues of overpayment of wages, sick and vacation pay, and other concerns from January 2009 to the present behind the board because of alleged inability of the town to address these past concerns brought out by the process of quality warrants. Previous to this meeting, I had sought clarification on this matter from the Vermont State Department of Labor Wage and Hour Division, as well as the U.S. Department of Labor Wage and Hour Division. The Vermont State Department of Labor informed me that the U.S. Department of Labor would be the correct and only venue to address this matter because Ponnell is a municipality. The U.S. Department of Labor contacted me on March 27th with a thoughtful and insightful answer to my concerns. They proposed a reasonable way forward for the town of Ponnell to settle the overpayment of wages, sick and vacation pay, without being punitive to the employees' questions, as well as ensuring accountability to the taxpayers, and allowing the Board of Selectment to exercise their fiduciary responsibilities to recover these funds. The following is their suggestion for the most correct method to resolve these issues. One, total the number of days that overpayment was made to Ponnell employees. These would be the days paid in excess of days earned, and we have an attachment here, actual overpayments as compiled by auditors Hutcheson and Shields. Two, meet with the employees to inform them of the errors and have them sign a consent of information form. It's available from the U.S. Department of Labor, as well as Vermont cities and towns. Three, recover the correct number of overpaid days from the current accumulation of sick and vacation time. In other words, not going back in previous years, those are closed. And this is what they told me. Under the F.S.L., Klinghoffer ruled, regulated in a 1960 case and expanded in numerous subsequent cases, this is the most reasonable way to correct and resolve these issues. To this end, we would ask if any of the selectmen would be interested in helping the auditors comply a complete list of these overpayments. We believe that the taxpayers have a right to resolution in this matter as soon as possible. I signed it myself and Auditor Betty Baker. The other auditor was unavailable, so we did go over, Betty and I went over this, these errors, these overpayments. And I bring this to your attention, and I think this is a positive step forward for Ponnell. These monies can be recovered without any hurt to the employees. And I have, if you look at that, on this side here, you'll see that some of them are already, this is just the first six months, we may be talking to some somewhere between $10,000, $15,000. But I think it's the proper thing to do for us and you as the selectboard, to collect these monies. These are overpayment. I got this information from Kelly Conley is her name. She's the director for Massachusetts, for New Hampshire and Vermont, U.S. Labor Department. I talked to her three times, and she assures me this is a proper ethical way to go about it. So I wanted to bring it to your attention. I don't expect any answer here tonight, but I do want to bring it to your attention.
Okay, I have a question. You made this call to her and discussed this fact with her.
Right.
Going back into '09. If I'm not mistaken, this board voted and agreed on the fact that we were not going back to '09, that we were starting forward, and we voted on that and put a period there. So I'm curious on why we're going back there. You were at this meeting, we discussed that, we stopped it there and said, errors made, we're not going back and chase at this point, we're going to correct them for the future and continue forward, but not spend all this time going backwards into the stuff that's been audited, some corrected, maybe some that's not, but we've been there, it's over. And we agreed, this board did, to stop it there. Why is this now continuing still?
Well, I have the minutes from the March 14th meeting, Steve, and I sought permission, this is before I knew this thing from the U.S. Department, I sought permission to talk to the town attorney, and I understand you made a decision to die that request. And because you, prior yearbooks are closed, this is the sentence that's here. Yes, they are closed. No one's talking of going back from fiscal records that were 19, 2009. This can all be adjudicated and settled in 2013, and if necessary, 2014. It's not going back. These people have been overpaid, honestly overpaid.
In 2013?
Nine, 10, 11, 12.
Yep, but see, now we're going back into those years that we said that we'd stop. We drew a line there.
There's no line to be drawn here on this.
Well, we did. We drew it here as a board and voted on it.
I don't believe you have a right, and I believe, you know, what you want to do is think about this, I would, you know, and obviously, it's important that you have a responsibility to the taxpayers, all of us have a responsibility, we as auditors have a responsibility to the taxpayers. This is money that was paid out to employees. It's not punitive how the money's coming back, but it is money that belongs to the taxpayers.
Right. And it was brought to our attention, and we since then have tightened the ropes on things and done corrective actions on several things. And that's why we said we weren't going back there, we voted on that, and we put a period. And we're going to put a period again. We'll vote on this.
So can we assume that the selectmen are not interested in helping the auditors pursue this?
We're going to find that out right now.
Okay.
So we did this vote once before, and we said we weren't going back. I'll take a motion again to make it clear that we're not.
That's not the motion that we're looking for.
I know what it is, but it involves going back into this timeframe. And we're not, if this board agrees to that, like they did before, we voted on it before, I'm asking the same again. So it's more clear that we do not want to go back there and start over again.
No one's talking about starting over.
Well, you are, if you're talking about going back to something that's been audited.
If you look at the second page there, there's a list, and there's people that, like, give me an example, one employee's got $350 there, just in the first six months, that he owes, that he's been overpaid. The taxpayers have a right to some accountability. No one is going to be punitive to that employee. He has already been rewarded with that money. And money's belongs to the town. You recently had a meeting about the new town hall and everything. I mean, obviously, I think another $10,000 or $15,000 would certainly be good in the coffers for the town. You people-
Where does this $13,000 go?
You're stretching with an imaginary figure again.
Well, if you take, if you take the trend for the first six months that's been done on the sheet, and there's been, the rest of it's been done, just not put on the sheet, if it's $1,300 for six months, you figure it out what it is for four years.
You said that's a trend, but there's no proof, definitely.
Well, there is.
There is.
Yeah. It's not all right here, but that's why we came to the select board, to see if someone might be interested in helping us trend it, get it down, decide on an appropriate, um, amount of days to get back and go forward from there.
Betty's right. We're asking you to give us a hand on this, to come up with a total, and then if you say, okay, we want to disregard the taxpayers' money, whatever the amount is, whatever that total is, you say, fine, we're not going to worry about collecting this money.
Another thing I've got here, now, if we go back and make the attempt to recover this money.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you're looking, you're looking at dollars from two, from four years ago now.
Right.
Okay? How much is that going to cost our, um, employees to recover that, to document all the recoveries and due to all the transactions? And then possibly have a whole bunch of people ticked off at us?
Well, that's where you're, you're-
We have to take a look at more than just what you're doing. We have to take a look at the whole situation.
Look at the, well, we've done the work. That's, that's the issue. It doesn't, it's not going to cost your employees anything, because the auditors are doing the work.
Well, who's going to go back to the employees and say, you've got to give us back this money? And where's that money going to come from?
That is where you meet with the employees to inform them the errors have been made, and they sign a consent of information. They, they will know about this before it happens.
They have no standing with the U.S. Labor Department.
Well-
They can go there because they've ordered, these are fair wages, they've been overpaid. And Ronnie brought something up in the discussion on March 14th. The U.S. Labor Department told me that the employees have a obligation and responsibility to tell their employer, the town, when they're overpaid.
Right. And if they put in for a vacation day, and they're paid regular time, and there's, if you're paid a vacation day, it shows on your check stub. Anybody whose work knows this.
Right.
If it doesn't show on your check stub, then it wasn't taken off your accrual. So therefore, you've been paid for a day that wasn't taken off your, you were just paid for it. Just paid.
Right. These employees, there's approximately eight employees, they're all full-time employees with benefits. No one is going to be hurt, they've already been paid for this time. They've already been paid for this time. This, and that time, and that money belongs to the town.
Again, I'm going back to the original. I, particular, my own personal feeling, I do not want to go back to '09. We made that clear. I have no problem in going forward, and if there's problems resulting now, we handle them as they come forward and correct them, so that they're not being made, but chasing a dime and spending a dollar to do it.
I would ask the taxpayers what they think about $10,000 worth of dimes.
But we don't know if it's $10,000 worth.
We will learn shortly if somebody would check that with us.
Well, you know, right, this is, this is a, this is a courtesy, the Board of Auditors, you know, as a board, we've come to you to ask if you would like to be involved in this particular issue, because-
I'm, I'm going to ask a question. Do you know what the auditor's budget is?
Yes.
You do?
Mm-hmm.
You know where we stand right now with it?
Uh, no, I don't.
Would you like to know? You are currently, at this point, $949.48 deficit.
And what are we with the road?
That is what the budget-
And the wastewater. No, no. There's, there's a line item in the road budget. That's audit, it's an audit line item.
This is what I'm looking at right now.
Well, you have to look at the whole picture, Steve.
But I'm looking at a picture. When you say wastewater and stuff like this, you're going to the-
Excuse me, I correct that. That's for the professional auditors, their share. It's not for you as town auditors, that is what you call side audit.
Well, it doesn't say that. It says auditor expense. You know, it does not say professional audit, Linda. And the line item, it says audit. You know, you've got an audit in the general, you've got an audit in the road.
Says CPA Audit Fund.
That's in the general fund. Yes.
That's what we pay for the CPA.
That's, that's the other $10,000 that you've budgeted.
$11,000.
Whatever. Yeah.
But what I'm saying is, what you're doing, and I know that we have three auditors now, and I know the expense line is different, but you're also overspent, and you're chasing yesterday. I'd like today being chased. I'd like today to be up to date, so everything is current and working today. If there's mistakes, we correct them and continue forward.
We are doing it. You're aware that we're doing it.
Well, what I'm hearing right now is this 2009 that we're drifting into again, that we asked a month ago, stop.
Not according to your minutes. Maybe according to you, Steve, but I guess-
Well, it's not according to me, because if I'm not mistaken, this board voted on that.
I would like to, you know-
I'd like to say one time here, if I'm reading here.
Yeah.
It says here that the Vermont State Department of Labor informed me that the U.S. Department of Labor would be the correct and only venue to address this matter. Now, that's the paragraph I'm concerned with. Uh, and if we got to have somebody, it's got to be somebody smarter than me, because I don't understand this. But somebody has to, because we can't just disavow it if this is what they're saying. That's, that's my point.
They gave us a-
I don't know.
They gave us, she, I talked to her three times, four times, actually, and she, she told me on the 27th of March, she said, there is a V way to go about it. The V way to go about it, and apparently has gone about it, is that you total up those days that are on the second sheet there, and like Dale's question, you get a dollar amount. And you get that dollar amount, and you, let's say, ex-employee is $1,800 overpaid, and you reduce his pay to a point where, over a year's time, you would get that $1,800 back. That has been numerous times. That's a, they said that's a good way to go. Doesn't sound like a good way to go for me. It sounds like a day, a trade-off day, a day for a day is a lot more sensible and reasonable than to start tampering with somebody's time. But these employees, and that's the bottom line here, these employees have been paid this money for work not performed, wages over and above what they were entitled to, the town, the select board, the auditors, everyone here has a fiduciary responsibility to look out for the taxpayers' money. We don't, the auditors aren't benefiting by this at all. This is, this is for the town.
Are we in violation of anything? Because I see the word, it is their suggestion. I don't see any statutes listed here. Um, my, my question is, is, are we in violation of anything here?
She told me you could go on the Klinghoffer rule, which involves a bakery back in 1960, and that, that has expanded to a great deal. And she also addressed me to another thing, which I did not put in this letter, but it's, which is kind of timely. It's S14 of the Employment Rights Act of 1996. Those two, she said, allows the town to recoup that money in a reasonable and correct way to resolve these issues. It's not punitive, it's not hurting anybody, they've already been paid for this. It can be stretched over two years. It doesn't have to be 2013 sick or, not sick, vacation pay or sick time to recover these monies. God, you're carrying a guy right now who owes $112 from the, from the road. You're carrying him forward with no, no accountability at all. So I mean, you know, and this is the way that you, you know, you went back in and you adjusted a few of these things already in 2012. It seems like a reasonable, sensible way to go.
And I guess I would just add that if an employee did not get paid enough vacation or sick time, would we forget about it then? Would we not go back to 2009 at that point? Just think that you guys, that, you know, as a selectboard, you have a responsibility to, to take care of the taxpayers' money. And while you may not have been on the board when this happened, it has happened and it should be taken care of. And we'd like your participation in it.
I got a question. If it was 2013, 2012 fiscal year, I'd say yes. Myself, I feel bad going after these guys. If you look in your column where it says rate, none of them guys are making a ton of money. You start taking 20 bucks a week out of them, they could be cutting in food on their table.
We don't have, that's not the way we want to do it. We want to take, we want to do the days and not the, if they've accumulated-
They're still taking money out of the pocket.
Eighty-six days, and they owe us two.
If a person would-
It would be the days, not the, not the, the dollars.
I mean, if we're breaking the law, I'm all for it, but if we're not, I'm, I work full-time, and I was overpaid once, and know what they told me? And I brought it to their, their attention.
Mm-hmm.
It's our fault. See you later.
Well, you have to speak for the taxpayers, the town, too, I mean.
I know, but-
Okay, I've got a suggestion to end this.
How much money is it going to cost us to figure out all these days?
It's not, we've already got the information. We just want you to sit down with us.
Well, if you already got any information, why ain't it all here so we know the total on everybody?
Well, we could do that, but we'd like to have you compile the information so you could see it as well as us. Doesn't that make sense?
No. I see us putting a whole lot of time invested in this, I see you people putting time invested in this again. I see us going backwards instead of forward. As I said before, if we're going forward, like we discussed a month ago, not going backwards, going forward, we'd address every one of these items. And if you can find us something that's going on currently, that's doing this, absolutely bring it to our attention.
We're doing that, and we'll be, we'll be asking for time with the selectboard to bring current concerns.
And that I have no problem with.
Well, that is nice, that's why I-
But I have a problem going back to 2009, especially when we sat here and told you that we did not want to go back there.
Nowhere in the minutes does it say that you told us. But let me, I-
Did we talk about that, guys? Because it seems like we voted on it, if I'm not mistaken, maybe I've got a problem remembering. But it seems like we discussed that and voted on it.
I don't know how the board, who reportedly represents the taxpayers, as we do as auditors, can allow any amount of money, whether it be $10,000 or more, or whatever it might be, and it appears it's going to be substantial, because we are going to total these. We are going to total these. If the board decides not to do this, the only remedy that we have as auditors is our fiduciary responsibility, is to petition the U.S. Department of Labor with the information we have to give to them. And we'll, and they'll make the decision at that point. And they'll make the decision at that point along with you. But we will notify you when we do that, for sure. But we believe that it's in the best interest of the town, it's the best interest of the select board, to work with the auditors, to see this money and recover this money. This is not punitive to any of these employees. If you worked for me and I paid you $500 and then I gave you another $500 for, because you're a nice guy and everything, and then I said to you, geez, you know, I never paid you that extra money and here's another $500, do you feel good about that? I can't feel good about it. I can't feel good about it.
I'm going to end this right now because we're going in circles. This board agreed that we did go on to that before. Actually, what I will do if the board would like, I will call the state auditor up and talk with him. And I will discuss this with him and see if he would like to meet with us and discuss this further on this particular item, because I still feel that going backwards is not the proper venue that we should be taking.
Truthfully, I figured that's the best way to go. It's both a state auditor. If he wants to come down, he comes down. If we're breaking the law, we've got to fix it. If not, I say we erase this and start fiscal year.
With the original motion four weeks ago, not to go back to start with.
How much time have you spent on this in the last month?
Not a whole lot from...
No, how many, what hours? Give me three hours, 20 hours, 30 hours?
Forty-five minutes.
Forty-five minutes.
The work is already done. We've already...
We've always been working at it for the last year.
And the deficit for the audit count, I might add, you know, I've only been here since the first of March, so...
That started July to July, sorry.
Yeah, there's carryover.
I understand, I know that.
Well, then, what we'll do, and you can make your motion, what we'll do is, again, we plead with the select board to help us in this thing. Betty and I, and Christine, if she's available, is going to try to help with this too. We're going to compile a, what Mike had asked for here, is a complete list of the amounts that are owed by these employees. And we're presenting to you, and at that same time, we're going to present it to the U.S. Department of Labor and tell them that we have a concern that we've brought before the board several times now and that we can't...
If they say we're breaking the law by not going after it?
Right, and they'll come in here and they'll look at things that we really don't need them to look at, but that's either here or there at this point.
How do you feel that's good for the towns during that all up? I'm curious on this here.
That's going to raise morale.
Talking about what's good for the town.
I think it's important for this town, this town, we're not printing money as far as I know here. The town has things that they would like to do with the town plan.
And a person that stands in your position actually has the vagacity to say that. Amazes me. It's our history, and you know what I'm talking about and I won't go there. But you do know what I'm talking about.
Steve, let's, no, we will not go there. The best thing I could tell you is that I took an oath and I take this job very serious. I know Betty takes it very seriously. And I believe that this is the right thing to recover this money for the taxpayers. And in my opinion, that's what we have to do. The taxpayers have a right to recover the money that was paid out in error. In error, that money is due to the town. Let's see, let's see, let's see.
Head auditor, before we go any further. And my motion still is that what we did four weeks ago, to end this search on that, is to stop that. That's our request from this board. We're going to call that motion and then, no, to stop you from going back to 09.
You know, literally, Steve...
That this board requests that you don't go back.
Okay, you can request, you can't tell us to stop.
First motion is, attack the auditor. All in favor? Second is to stop at this point from this course of duty and not research fiscal 09 and go from fiscal year forward. We have no problem with.
Motion until further... Warning from our state auditor.
Our motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I can't go along with that because it's, I don't know if we have, we still are usually telling others not to go.
It's that we requested from this board not to go further back into 09.
Wow, see, I'm still concerned with this mortgage here. There's got to be somebody that can, that audit, that can tell me, you know, that this is the way we got to go. I don't want to have, you know, my personal opinion is, I don't really want to see the U.S. Department of Labor committee. That is the last thing that I want to see. And if that's what's going to happen, I think we ought to take, and if this person here, I mean, I don't know. Rick said there was a suggestion, but it's also laid out how they did it and they're basing it under some rules and different cases and all this stuff. So I'm thinking this isn't something somebody just dreamed up. And that's the only thing that I can say about it, if I'm not going to... I don't want to get the Department of Labor in here and search them through everything and everything. I don't think that's... I think we ought to rectify the situation. And supposedly, these auditors say they got much work to compile it, remember, anyway. They got all the information done.
All we wanted was one of you, one or two of the whole board to look at how we put this together and see if we have a feeling for the brand. And then at that point, if you said they didn't, whatever, whatever they wanted, and you said, whatever the reason, it's not worth it. But not to know the amount, I think the short term, then, every taxpayer in the county will decide. I don't work that far. But no circumstances, could anyone ever work that?
We are, we thought to the auditor, we will get our information and we will...
Can I ask one more thing of the auditors? And we are working on some things that we have already. And we need to set up a meeting with, on a regular basis, a monthly meeting with the board to bring this to the board. Want you, Linda, corrected what you can for some issues which you cannot and refer to you. That we have a regular meeting time, like Dacey or Transcorp Station.
Can we talk about this one here?
Does this board have any problems with that?
No.
Could you give us a time that you're, you know, when you think you can, on a regular meeting for us to talk? Starting next morning?
We've got three nights booked, so we have to get the other one. First one is Transcorp Station, something, yeah. Highway and then the transportation.
Can we be on the third meeting on a regular basis?
Well, I can't see what they'd very wrong if you're coming in here regularly. Have to get this thing behind us.
And we'll give you written things that we have concerns about. We don't expect any incidents that night. And, you know, do some research or something, but there are concerns. The only other thing I would like to say to the board, to Linda, in the last month, one or two days, we would like to see that more and more.
You're working warrants and once a month.
I see what you're saying, okay.
We're going to set up every...
That's fine, that's fine. Yeah, what we were trying to do is we want to keep up on the warrants. We also are looking at bills and different things and we want to bring those to your attention. And we are contacting vendors, and you should be aware of it.
That's another question we're going to bring up. Why are you contacting vendors?
We have concerns about bills.
What do auditors normally do?
What do auditors do, Steve?
I'm not sure. I don't see in our audit handbook where we attack vendors.
We have concerns about somebody that we don't, that would be in danger. One of you was called off tonight, champagne, receipts don't match the figure. We're very concerned about that.
And that is because something's missing.
That's what we're concerned about. Why don't the receipts match what's being paid?
And I think we went over that before. Sometimes these guys get fuel in their vehicles. They're out of pollen, it may get in their pocket, light it or something, and may not make it back, which I'm not representing as being correct, but it could be an error there.
We have not found, since we've been doing these APs, a receipt for champagne oil bill that matches the receipt.
Are we looking at a big discrepancy in this particular billing?
We're adding up the receipts and, yes, we're looking at some receipts that are not very timely at all. We're looking at receipts that, my question, that's another question. And that's the thing that we're bringing to you in writing.
How about our fuel oil?
We're looking at that too. Looking at that too. We have numerous dealers here with all different kinds of prices. We don't have any budget things allowed. People have set up contracts that are supposedly word of mouth verbal contracts. Those are things that we're looking at.
I have confusion on that because it's just like our employees. There's a certain status that I thought this board operated, not the auditors. But that's our responsibility. And getting our best deals to go before they come from, making sure...
Apparently not so, because I've talked to representatives of West Door. They don't deal with employees. I've talked to representatives between ours, who don't deal with employees of the board. It's not really, it's their responsibility.
And the sum that's on the employee who has committed to go do that and get the figures and get it back to us somehow.
You can't bring it in minutes, you can't bring it...
I don't believe they did this on their own because a lot of people don't do this on their own.
It's, those are the kinds of things that we like to bring to you along, many other things. We put in policy, we do.
No, that's something we recently added to it, to go to the transferation because it should have been, if you care before, it could have been somewhere through the channels.
So just, we appreciate the third of the month that you'll be here. We don't have written things, we'd be terrible, we can discuss them. And we don't expect you to make decisions on it. But we will, Betty and I are going ahead on this.
The third meeting?
No.
Is that the wastewater?
Right. And we do have some concerns about the wastewater, which we'd also like to present you at the third meeting to recognize them that you are the waste source community.
Anything that's conducted about that particular grant should be over that place. Let's return the wastewater to the stewardship, which we are, and we need to do the front.
Okay, at 6:00, then. The rule for water to get in there, be it on the selected...
As long as it's not... Calling here.
Thank you, Betty.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Class 2 and structured grant applications. I'm assuming everybody had a chance to run over this town road and bridge standards for the Town of Pownell. Our road foreman obviously has looked at this. He wrote this a letter stating that we're still waiting for cost estimates, hydraulic studies, and the structures grant applications, and hereby request the board authorize the chairman to sign the completed applications for submission on Monday, April 15. The figures are anticipated to be received on Friday, April 12. Class 2 resurfacing grant application will be filed for TH2 North Pownell Road, as previously discussed, in the amount $126,400. A structured grant application for Main Street Bridge, as previously discussed, in an estimate amount of $134,225 and a box cover on Mount Anthony Road. The amount is unknown at this time. That's from our road foreman. So he's in agreement with this. What is your pleasure?
Make a motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. After I read all that, why didn't you just stop me in a minute?
Well, what you read is Class 2 structured grant application. Okay, that is not what you have in your head.
Right, the bridge standard here, they're two different things.
Right. When the application is completed, the figures will be presented to your signature or not, probably exceeding the amounts that we were noted in the memo.
So we're not signing this right now?
Not at the moment.
It's got a sticky on it, it says sign.
No, but you're on board.
It confused me when it says sticky and it says sign.
We're back on Class 2 structured grant application. Remember, the memo says you don't have the application in party because it's incomplete tonight.
So we're doing the town road and bridge standards.
I am asking for a motion from the board to authorize its chairman to sign those applications when they are complete, the figures to arrive.
Make the motion with the chairman signing when they're complete.
Okay. Second on that motion.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Forgive me for my double mistakes.
You're getting a lot of them today, don't you?
Been a trying evening so far.
Yes, it's been a... Now we can adopt the roadway.
Find it again. Okay. Town road and bridge standards, Town of Pownell, Vermont. This is our option. Our road foreman has looked at it and we need motion to sign.
Make a motion with the sign.
And all in favor?
Aye.
The next one, Steve, is the information for this meeting.
Okay.
More verbal pen?
That was still that we'd be trans today, you were here.
Yeah, they're there a minute here, okay, yep. All right. Annual financial plan town highways. Class 2, over 5,000, 978, 2, class 2, 79, 888, 588. Over 128, 872. Town tax funds, 54803, 003. A grand total of $676,070. General maintenance, $300,535. General maintenance, $300,535. 75,000, total $676,070. These are selectmen of Town of Pownell certified funds raised by town taxes equivalent or greater than the sum of the least $300 per mile, each mile of Class 1, 2, and 3 highway in the town. Motion's on signature.
Motion's aye.
Second. Second, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you. I always love your clarification.
You done? Okay. With that, under new business, Red Cross.
John, will you come up? Will you come up?
You're not representing the Red Cross.
Oh, both of us. I've talked to John, he called me the other night. This is about certifying the school as certified shelter. Okay. John?
I can make a... Say something first?
Certainly.
I'm sitting here as a citizen of Pownell, okay? I happen to be on the school board. I'm not speaking for the school board. It's a lot of work off the clock researching the Red Cross. And so, I, I'm just here to share information, okay, but not officially from the board.
Not speaking for the school.
I'm not speaking for the school, I'm just, stuff I'm gonna share with, so, no.
Okay, well taken, thank you.
This is on the shelter to certify the Red Cross. Red Cross certified the school as a shelter. And their main concern is who's responsible to vandalism of the school in the event that has been opened as a shelter. The school, school board's main concern about being a shelter is who's responsible if vandalism should occur during a time that the school is open for shelter. Need to know this before I sign the paper to...
If I'm not mistaken, anytime the school is used, we have an insurance claim. I'm not sure how that works with an emergency situation. Because anytime we use the school, the selectmen give permission to use the school, our insurance is kicking in in these situations.
We're talking about a disaster here, correct? Townwide disaster, we have to keep people, keep them warm, whatever.
We discussed this at the fire station that night, and it was the same thing that, it's very difficult to have your emergency people in babysitting people in a shelter when there's an emergency situation, or they need to be out working. And I don't know if they've stepped forward to making a change in this, that somebody be responsible, kind of an overseer, I hate to call it a babysitter, but somebody is responsible taking care of the surroundings when people are there.
That's where Red Cross says, they, like, I heard 20, but he was, John was 26. Minimum of six people take a class, be certified and run the shelter. But if these six people are 750 people, something might happen. School's just here isn't the page for the day.
I think personally, my community's a fault in the chats, because the education that we have to get control of.
I think the concern was more, what's happened so far is, the school board is separate entity, and the town is separate entity. As far as the Board of Education and school, we're offering the facility. The facility has been surveyed a month ago by the Red Cross. Suitable for sheltering up to 50 people. That's because the bathroom situation is such that the Red Cross requires at least one bathroom for 25 people. And the way it's arranged with the gym and the bathrooms, we have two bathrooms available for a shelter. So, sometime, sometime in the near future, the Red Cross has sent us a contract, all right, where we provide, the school provides a facility, the Red Cross has listed what they'll pay for, which is fuel for the generator heat. We're gonna require Abbey Foods to have one employee there in the kitchen, and the Red Cross said they would pay for that. They would also supply two pallets of bedding and cots and water for suitable for 50 people. Again, this has not been brought, the school board hasn't voted on anything, hasn't signed anything, okay, but we have, the survey is done. Myself and Todd Phillips, the principal, were asked to pursue that, and we did. So, the Red Cross came down, and we have the complete, complete survey. As far as this training, this is where the separation comes in, all right? As Pownell has an emergency manager director and Mike. And then, our understanding from Larry Kofferman of the Red Cross, that your people, at least six at a time, would be responsible for running the facilities with their help of the Red Cross supervision. So, at that point, once we've signed the contract for the Red Cross to use it, the way Larry Kofferman, who is the Vermont person in charge of this for the Red Cross, either the governor or the Town of Pownell declares an emergency, and we would get a call from Mike to say, open the school. So, we'll either come, apparently, it comes from you, all right, to say, and we had, and with the Red Cross, we had to designate two people who would turn the key to let you folks in. And then, at that point in time, the Red Cross, in conjunction with Mike and his team, would take over the school. And our concern, or the school board's concern, is that at that point, you know, who's watching out for the library and things like that?
I'm also going to the school board meeting Monday night. Yeah, Monday night.
Well, we should just contact our insurance company, find out if they have...
Who is watching?
He said the six people, the Red Cross people. I don't know.
Class four, we gotta have his class to get people into it.
Right. We gotta have six people, and they gotta be qualified.
Right. Right now, they're opening up the gym, the cafeteria, and the two bathrooms downstairs, and everything else could be roped off, but you know how that goes.
Right. Somebody's watching it, it's...
They're talking to Ray, just to block the hallways with tables.
Right, but actually, that's not the hardest thing to do, because the bathroom's right off the gym.
Exactly, yeah.
So, two people could watch the hallway.
Yeah.
If they were tentative to do such. And two could watch the room, and one's a floater. So, I mean, it's a doable situation the way the school set up, but we need the six people.
It's a little bit awkward, how, because of two different boards involved.
Right.
So, we almost need to, for the town, for a town board to authorize Mike to work with us, and for the school board to authorize, you know, Todd to work with you. So, we have to have some sort of liaison.
Meeting of the minds.
Meeting of the minds in there, some, an official, okay? I'm not here officially at all. I'm just here trying to get this done.
Right.
And I said I'd come and come and help.
I would contact the insurance company, and I know before Monday night, when I go over there, I can have an answer to them guys.
But we should make a motion for Mike be, have the authority to do this from this board.
I can't have the authority to talk to us.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Speak for the town to the board.
Right.
So, the board can...
The town represent us at the board on this particular item.
And then, hopefully, the board will reverse the...
I think. As, you know, it's my job anyways.
But being it's where the school board...
Just to be safe, right?
Makes a loophole if we approve it, then it's crossed that T there. So, I need a motion. Second, Adam. All in favor.
Aye.
You are the key man on that now. One board to another board. Thank you. And you will look into when you meet with these people, what you need for six people. There were some volunteers, I believe, when we were talking to the firehouse.
I'm gonna draft up a letter and try to get it out to different churches and stuff like that.
Because, like I said, we don't want our emergency responders and...
No, they can't be over there.
People like this involved, because they'll be actually out working the scene, so, it has to be people working behind the scenes. But it's doable, and I think there are people out there that would...
Draft letters and get them out, senior group over here, and stuff like that.
Hey, what do you think? You know, that you're...
Who?
Did you see him?
Same that taught the class?
Yeah. You know, the boys don't get enough certificates. He said that pretty much not doing too good on it, the feds aren't doing too good on it. I emailed him again to find an update, and I never get any answer back.
I'll see if I bump into him.
All right. With that situation, is there any more on the Red Cross business?
No, I think I'm off it.
Okay. Last but not least, I guess we're up to contract negotiations with EOS Ventures, which is RE, the solar array down here. And just a reminder, I believe this will be an executive session, so before I take that motion, this...
Wait, why are we going to an executive session on this?
Contract negotiations.
Yeah.
And a reminder that there will be four selectmen in Crutland Saturday, April 13th. But then, I'll take a motion to go into an executive session on contracts.
Make a motion, go into the second session.
Have a second.
Yep.
All in favor.
Aye.
Thank you, people.
I'll see you Monday night.
Thanks, Mike.